I'm here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
Kevin.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, we don't have any additional agenda items as far as upcoming meetings and item updates. I'll remind folks that next Monday, the 18th, we have two work session items, discussion of recreation and continued discussion of interaction with city committees. Originally, we were going to have the continuation of the city committees tonight, but because of the public hearing, that needed to be moved. Then the following Monday, the 25th, we have the interim report from the Tacoma Junction Task Force and also tentatively a work session discussion of sidewalks. And then the 25th is our last meeting before going on recess in August and then we'll return Tuesday, September 6th. We'll now move to public comment period and that's a time for anybody to speak to the council about anything that is not on our regular meeting or public hearing agenda this evening. So if you're here to talk about the request to the Board of License Commissioners to expand Come to Africa Restaurant, please hold your comments until a public hearing. And if you're going to speak on any of our regular resolutions with voting, the time to speak on those items is then. So it's basically if you're here to speak about the work session item or anything not on the agenda, now's the time to make your comments. And if you want to come to the microphone and identify yourself, please keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, looks like no public comments, so we'll move to council comments. Okay, non-working link. Councilmember Ray.
Really quickly, I just wanted to make a request of the city manager for some time in the fall for us to get a public report on the use of the license plate scanners. It's been a little while since we've had an update on that. There was a proposal about us giving information to the fusion centers. I'm not sure we ever made a full decision on that. I know we got some more information back, but I know this is an issue of importance to the residents. Also, very interestingly, I got this, as I think probably all did, social determinants of health from the Adventist Healthcare Company, which is very interesting because if you look at it very quickly, it shows that there's a clear link between people being lower income, people being more likely to be minority and then having worse health outcomes. So I just think that's a little bit ironic that we got this. Also with the healthcare company proposing moving the hospital away, which is generally moving to an area that has people who are not as low-income and not as diverse, so kind of ironic. I just wanted to point that out.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the forum that was called or held last Friday. It was called by County Council President Valerie Urban on the subject of the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan. And because of the turnout, it had to be moved from this room to the cafeteria over next door at the elementary school. And was that the junior high? But anyway, elementary school next door. But the point of it was a three-hour meeting with a number of representatives from the county council and the mayor and myself from the city council, city planning staff, county planning staff involved a presentation about the White Flint Sector Planning Process over the last five years. It's just an illustrative example. And it lasted three hours and the vast majority of people stayed through all three hours. Part of, a good half of the time was devoted to breakout sessions where people could talk about various sub-issues with respect to what the future of the Tacoma Langley area is going to look like. Most important, I thought, was the fact that there were representatives from Prince George's County, including Rusher and Baker, the county executive recently elected, one of the council representatives from the Prince George's County Council, and a number of staff members from the Prince George's Planning Office. So it was really a by-county discussion. And I thought it was a huge success. And my feeling is, is that, well, a couple things, is that it looks like the formal adoption of the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan, the associated zoning that would go with it, which currently looks like CRT zoning, and the urban design guidelines are not going to be probably formally adopted until September. Originally, they were shooting for getting it all formally adopted this July. It's not really a significant difference. And when that gets done, that will sort of bring to a close this rather lengthy formal planning process that the county and the city and the community have been going through together. But what this forum showed, and this is the key thing, a piece of information that I want to get out, is that a new process was started last Friday of bringing together of saying, okay, if we've got a plan that we're basically, a master plan that we're basically in agreement on for the Tacoma Crossroads area, then we need now to start a discussion of how we're going to get that implemented. And as it gets implemented, what's it going to look like? And what do we want to see happen there? In other words, get beyond all the formal documents and get down to the real business of the redevelopment of this area. And I feel like that this forum that we held last Friday, thanks to Valerie Urban and her staff, was the beginning of a really critical process that's going to continue. And I told her personally that I felt that this was an event that needs to be repeated on a periodic basis as we dig deeper and dig deeper into the planning and decision-making that will lead developers. It's also important to note that a number of developers, large property owners, were also represented there. So we had residents, we had business owners, we had various organizations, politicians and professional planners, just about all the stakeholders you can imagine were in that room talking to each other for about three hours. It was an extraordinary thing. And I'm real excited about it and I think we've laid the groundwork and we're going to be having more of these kind of meetings going forward in the future. And so I just wanted people to be here, who are here or watching this on television, to understand that this is, I think, an important event that we're going to build upon. So don't think, therefore, that just because the county council is getting ready to formally adopt the sector plan, that that's going to sort of be the end of the whole process. In fact, it's just going to be the end of the first stage. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
My comment tonight is about the property at the corner of Jackson Avenue and Ethan Allen. So I got continued complaints from neighbors this weekend because the people who were setting up the impromptu flea market are still there. So I know that there's some question now about the ownership of the property, but and it's across the street from the church and the church occasionally, I guess, uses it for parking. But the neighbors have also looked it up in the property records and they all see an individual who has, who clearly owns the property and so they don't really see any discrepancy of, you know, around whether or not the church owns it. They see it as owned by an individual. So I think it would be good to be able to communicate to the public what our position is on that and what we're doing and why. Because from two years ago, when Mr. Beckley still lived across the street and would call, the police would come out and send the flea market people on their way. And so it seems an inexplicable change of policy to the residents. So I think that we should articulate what that is and what we're doing about it.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move to the city manager's comments.
Just two brief items this evening. I did leave at your place, is that the dais? Just kind of a summary of the change orders that have been executed for the public works facility renovation. We've talked about all of these as they have arisen, but I just thought it might be helpful for the council to kind of see those en masse. If there's any questions about any of the items, just shoot me an email and I'd be happy to give you a little bit more detail. Right now, where we're at with the project, as I had mentioned before, you know, the rainy spring did push the project completion date back from early August. We're now looking at probably early to mid-September. Met with the contractor on Friday. They will be working crews six days a week, you know, trying to catch up on some time. But that's the timeframe we're now looking at, is probably the middle of September. And the only other item I had this evening is just to give you an update on the speed camera for East West Highway. The chief shared with me that we have gotten the permit from S H A and I expect that the camera will be installed probably within the next two weeks. So we'll give you an update once it's up and running. And as we typically do, there's a warning period before we actually start issuing citations.
Thank you for the warning.
Let you know. That's it.
And this time it won't go into effect on April Fool's Day?
No, that was kind of bad timing before, but no. It should be well up and running long before then.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Then we will move to the public hearing. And this is a public hearing on the applicant's request to the Board of License Commissioners to expand the restaurant, Come to Africa. And let me just remind folks, I have the list of people to testify, that this is the result of bringing this to the council last week and we decided that we did not know how we wanted to proceed, that it was important to hear from the public. That's why we scheduled this hearing. And I will read the names from the list and I'll go, you know, kind of to a head so that people know where they are. And if you want to come up to the podium and please give us your name and also we'll use the timer and you have the timer showing on the podium there. And there'll be a warning light and a single buzz at 30 seconds. That's a reminder to please try and wrap up your comments and then the red light and the buzzer at the end of that. And there's a button on the front left on the top of the podium. That podium moves up and down about eight inches, so if it's not at a comfortable height, you can use that button to move it up and down so that you're comfortable at the podium. And so, does the city, city manager or anybody city manager want to make any other introductory remarks on the public?
I'll just add a couple of comments besides the information that was presented last week by Mr. Atte and the police chief and myself. I did follow up on a couple of questions that were based by council, which are in your packet. One of the questions was why this goes, I guess, what happens when somebody wants to expand? How does that work with an alcoholic beverage license? Essentially, if there's a major modification in the operations or hours of a business that receives an alcoholic beverage license, the Board of License Commissioners reconsideres the appropriateness of the alcoholic beverage license for that different space. And that's what Mr. Atte is going for, is with the idea of expanding the space, is this license appropriate for that changed operation of his restaurant? There was a question as to how easy it is to remove an alcoholic beverage license if there are problems with the operation of the business. The Board of License Commissioners can schedule a hearing at any time if there's documented violations of the various regulations or if there's other kinds of problems. Also, all licenses come up for renewal on April 30 each year. And if there's a request, a hearing can be held to simply not renew the license as of April 30. And just as I had mentioned last week, the Board of License Commissioners gives heavy weight to the opinions of municipal councils and police agencies as they consider the appropriateness of an alcoholic beverage license. A question was also asked about food to alcohol ratios. And a Class B restaurant license holder is to maintain a 50-50 percent food to alcohol ratio for the duration of the license. For the first year, they have to turn in receipts. They don't need to turn in receipts after the first year, but the, there is to be 50 percent food receipt as part of their business. Also, food must be available for all the hours that alcohol is served. It doesn't have to be the full menu, but there does need to be food available. But that's all of the follow-up.
Okay. And if I can just get a clarification on the first point that you made, I want to make sure that it's clear, I don't remember exactly the language you used, but it was about the alcoholic beverage license, this process coming about because of the expanded space. And I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that what is the topic that we're talking about here is basically there was an alcoholic beverage license for the smaller space. Now that there will be a bigger space, that license, it's not like if this, if they don't get the license for the expanded space, they would still have the license for the smaller space. This is the license and it's for the whole space.
That's right. Basically, it's what, how does, when the Board of License Commissioners approved the Class B license in the first place, it envisioned a certain operation, a certain size, certain hours. When there's major changes, they have to then think about this different size and perhaps different hours, whatever, of the new operation and see if it's appropriate for an alcoholic beverage license to serve that whole space.
Right.
So it's not, you just can stay on this half of the room.
And it's not, well, if you don't get the one for the expanded space, then you can go back to the old license. The old license is essentially?
It's a new look at the one.
Move at this point. It's almost like a renewal with different circumstances. Either you keep it or you don't keep it.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, if this doesn't get approved, they can continue to operate in their, as they are now, in their smaller space with a license. But if they wanted to, if they want to expand, they have to have an approval for this whole new space.
That's my understanding. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move to the public hearing. The first person is Stephen Disposito, followed by Ramon Proctor and Andy Donald Thompson.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor Williams and council members for taking the time to hear from the residents around this establishment this evening. My name is Stephen Disposito. I live at 617 Elm Avenue with my wife and two children. And that location, by the way, is pretty much just behind the restaurant. We're just kind of a parking lot, a hill, and then our houses sit up on that hill. So our backyard, pretty much, you can see down to the rooftop of the restaurant. We moved to Tacoma Park about 11 years ago, probably for many of the reasons that you all live here or moved here, the peace, the quiet, and the ability to raise our children in that kind of a setting. For the past couple of years, we've started to experience, not knowing what had changed in terms of ownership or type of restaurant, we started to experience loud noises late at night. So we would be sleeping with the window open and after midnight, 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, we'd hear a lot of music. The music would almost seem to increase in volume at that time of the night and would hear people in the parking lot and a lot of commotion in the parking lot. There's a parking lot both in front of the establishment and in the back. Eventually, the problem worsened. We quite a few times called the police, tried to get something done about a particular evening's noise. And we eventually, it kept getting worse and there was a fight one night that was just, it just sounded awful. And there had been a couple of occasions where it sounded like there was a lot of kind of raucous behavior coming from what seemed the back parking lot. And this particular fight, you could hear the person being hit and you wondered how bad off that person was. Of course, we called the police. On a couple of occasions, when we've heard that noise, I've driven by to try to see what's going on and all you really see is just a lot of commotion, people in the parking lot, that kind of thing. The interesting thing, when I found out just a few days ago that this license was up for renewal or for a new license, whatever the determination is, was to read the materials that were provided, I have them here written for him, but online, and to find that not only did the police department confirm everything we had been experiencing, but so did the owner himself in his written materials, essentially saying that there was, the crowds were too large and they were hard to control. And then he had to have security and call the police. It's not the kind of establishment we'd like to have near us. I went over this weekend and visited the establishment just to get a sense for myself of what it was like. I went on Saturday night about 10:15. And it was interesting because when you walk, I don't know if you've been to a restaurant, but when you walk in, it doesn't appear to be a restaurant. It feels like a nightclub. There aren't many tables. The ones that exist are small. There's a couple of small V A P areas. The emphasis is clearly on music and the bar and the alcohol, or at least that's the way it appeared visually. I struck up a conversation with the bartender and started asking him about things like why the restaurant wasn't very crowded. And he said essentially, on a typical Friday or Saturday night, the crowds show up at about midnight and then continue from there. And that explained a lot because it was always odd to us how the sound and the volume and the intensity would always pick up after midnight and would be worse between midnight and 4:00.
And if you could please wrap up.
Yeah, just a couple more comments. The other thing that was interesting to me is I'm not sure that it could even be classified as a restaurant. I asked about the food. I wasn't offered food. I wasn't offered a menu when I walked in and it seemed like the food was a secondary consideration. So I think one of the questions is what is this establishment? So my request really is the following. I request that you not either renew or approve this license. And if there is approval, I'd like to understand the reasons that any particular council member feels like this restaurant should receive this renewal or this expansion or this new, whatever the form is, liquor license. Because I think the residents around there would like to understand the basis for this decision, whichever way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramon Proctor and Andy Donald Thompson and Betty Thompson.
I want to say good evening and thank you all for your time. I live at 619 Elm Avenue, matter of fact, right next door. My wife and I have been there for 31 years. We raised our children in this neighborhood and we raised our grandchildren in this neighborhood. We moved there because it was a quiet, peaceful, safe place to bring up your children and all. We've always had a peaceful neighborhood. The neighbors try to know one another. As he said a couple of years ago, all of a sudden, all this noise and stuff started coming from down below the hill. Now, I have a pretty big yard. Matter of fact, it's longer than this building. And the problem I have is I suffer with fibromyalgia. I don't know if any of y'all know what that is, but it's a nerve disorder and we must have plenty of sleep. I get up at 5:30 in the morning. I can't sleep in the summertime with my windows open because the noise that's down there sounds like it's in my backyard. I hear fights down there and arguing and I'm on record with the police department for making numerous of calls to this establishment. We just don't want that kind of carry on in our neighborhood. I mean, I'm a businessman myself, but I learned to respect neighborhoods that I go into. These people seem to not have any respect for our neighborhood. There's just arguments and music constantly all around that building. And not on top of that, we're kind of worried about our property. The values of our property. Because if we chose to sell, no one wants to move into or buy a piece of property that's got that hanging over top of it. And I'm quite concerned about it. And I play a great deal in property tax. And it hasn't gone down, it's constantly going up. So we're just asking y'all to take a look at this quite seriously and try to understand how we feel or how you might feel if this was in your backyard. We just want a safe, quiet neighborhood as we always have. That's all. Thank you.
And if I can just ask a quick question that might be helpful to hear from you or anybody else who's going to testify. We had some information last week from the police chief and from the business owner talking about how things had changed in the last three months. And it would be helpful to hear from folks if you have experienced a change in the last three months. My understanding is that there haven't been any complaints in the last three months. It would be helpful to know if what you're hearing and what you're talking about has continued to be the same or has changed.
Well, as far as the change goes, you're saying, well, are they constantly making noise every night as it was at one time? I'm not hearing it all the time. But I am hearing it and it's been quite frequently. And I am on record, as I say, for making complaints about this. This, I mean, the noise is just too loud. If it's a restaurant, it's a restaurant. I'm a former musician. I played all over the country and I know what's the difference between a bar and a restaurant. And this place is clearly an after hours spot. And they seem to have no regard for respecting our neighborhood. And that's all we ask. We just want some peace and quiet in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Donald Thompson, Betty Thompson and Roger Leon or Leu.
Thank you, mayor and council members. I'm Andy Thompson. I live at 611, oh, I don't know. Mr. Atte has requested an expanded liquor license and I ask the council members to please take seriously the responsibility to evaluate, as most government municipalities do, not only the owner's and the manager's long-term track record, but also their ethical character as evident in their self-portrait. And the self-portrait I'm referring to is what you all have a copy of, which is this document, you know, on page one, the back of it, has the squared-off area about Come to Africa. And that's what I want to address my remarks to because it's filled with all kinds of inaccuracies which are deceptive. And I don't know who wrote it, but whoever wrote it did not do the owner a service because it just portrays it so inaccurately that I think it needs to be called attention to. It's obviously not a restaurant. You know, I've been there and it is clearly a nightclub. And so to ask for additional space makes no sense whatsoever, you know, to make it more of a restaurant. It's just going to make it more of a, more populated and louder nightclub. This description says the customers come here to eat and recreate after long hours of work. This sounds as though it is a commercial version of the Statue of Liberty, welcoming the tired and weary diverse ethnic workers of the world. But Come to Africa provides no food to speak of, nor is it a safe harbor for anyone, not for the customers nor for the neighbors. Further, the official description says that the setting of the establishment is bound directly by, quote, "a stretch of forest." This sounds like a peaceful wilderness, a buffer for neighbors. But that also paints a distorted picture. Yes, there are indeed trees, but they're in our backyards. The neighborhood property is immediately adjacent to our private homes, many of which shelter young children and parents who sleep. And the use of our own property has been compromised by lack of sanitation, shouting, recent light pollution, a new problem, and the noise of early morning fist lighting. That's their track record and we should not be confused by a few months of quieter operation. This description the city and the county have been given further distorts reality by saying their residents dwell only, quote, "on the far wings of the property." This is not the case. Residents live immediately adjacent to the background of the neighborhood as they've described it. Our neighborhood is no place for a nightclub and a vote for granting a second license is a vote to destroy our neighborhood, I think. Mr. Atte's application for approval says that doubling the existing floor space will resolve the issues, which the owners honestly admit to having with past crowd violence. They say approval will create new jobs and provide inexpensive breakfasts and lunches. This is like saying doubling the size of Afghanistan will end its internal wars, its population will stop growing poppies for drug consumption, and instead will suddenly be peaceful and extend growing cereal grain for giving neighbors inexpensive breakfasts. Doubling the size of the crowd will more likely double the extent of the above problems. Doubling the size of the crowd will more likely double the extent of the above problems. So the overly optimistic application seems to me a distortion. So I ask you to deny the application until you get more information. If, if you live there, you have, you'd not be able to vote on this in favor of supporting a bigger tax base. Don't, don't increase the tax base and the income on the backs of the neighborhood of residents of Stone Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Thompson, Roger Leu, and Bertan Nuchang.
Hi, I'm Betty Thompson, I live with that guy, at six eleven Elm Avenue. And as he said, the forest that's in back of the restaurant are the trees in our backyard. So we're, we're right there. I've just got a couple of points of Steve and Andy and really have done a great job pointing out some of the problems that we've had. I'd point out that almost everybody who lives right in back of, of the restaurant is here, or has written to you, except for people who happen to be away right now, of neighbors. There, I haven't known of any neighbors who have come or have written to you to say, this is a good idea. So keep that balance in mind, that, that people are concerned and there aren't people who are enjoying the presence of this restaurant in back of us. It's clearly a nightclub, Andy's been over there, it's, you know, as, as he and Steve said, there's, you know, colored lights, VIP seats, not food circus in any obvious way. I want to ask, who enforces the requirement, according to the liquor board that Ms. Ludlow made reference to, for Class B license holders to maintain a fifty-fifty food to alcohol ratio for the duration of the license? I can't believe that that is being met right now. And, and, and I would point out that in the past, we've had plenty of restaurants in that same shopping center and never had a problem with restaurants. So, so if you can encourage this establishment to become a restaurant, that could be a solution here. We have however, as some of you may remember, had experience with a nightclub in that place in the past, and we had the same problems, the same exact problems. Andy was real active with that back then. And what it took, three decades ago, was time and energy and litigation and code enforcement, which cost the city money, cost the city's time, cost the neighborhood endless aggravation, sleepless nights, and hard work, and a pro bono lawyer from the neighborhood, in order to solve that problem. So in order to deal with this, it seems like the simplest way to go is for you all to take action now on this request, instead of, you know, in opposing this request, instead of leaving us to come back to you over time, saying, well, it's not solved, yeah, doubling the space is not a solution to this problem. So I would ask you to keep the, the restaurant from becoming an even bigger problem than it already is, encourage the owner to turn it into an actual restaurant, keep nightclubs out of that shopping center to the extent you can. I doubt that you, just as, just as we didn't realize when they made the original application, we didn't know this was going to be a nightclub, this is what it is. So not nightclubs, restaurants are fine. And I would also appreciate, as I think Steve had mentioned in his written testimony, that it would be great to have an immediate, for the record, comment from any of you who decide to vote in favor of this expansion. I would like to know why people in other parts of the city are voting against the neighbors of this establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Leu, Bertan Nuchang, and Chief Song Theodore.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here to testify for Come to Africa Restaurant. My name is Roger Leu, and I-
Excuse me, could you speak up just a minute? Thank you.
My name is Roger Leu. I go to Come to Africa an average of three times, three days a week. I go there mostly to eat, and because it's the only restaurant in the area which provide the African food. I understand how comfortable the neighbors can be if there is a loud music, but I think expanding the restaurant is a part of the solution, because when the restaurant is crowded, there are people standing outside waiting to serve, because when they order the food, we always have to wait for the food to get prepared, to get ready. And most of the time, there is no space to, to sit in the restaurant, people are hanging in the parking lot, waiting for the food to be ready. I think expanding the restaurant would be a good solution for that problem. As I said, I really understand how uncomfortable it is for someone who wants to sleep and there is music, loud music. And I, I think the owner has a good move by deciding to expand, so that it could contain the noise in the restaurant and it will not disturb anybody out of the restaurant. So I strongly support the expansion idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Bertan Nuchang, Chief Song Theodore, and Prince Kenneth Epi.
Good evening. My name is Bertan Nuchang. I'm a patron of Congress Restaurant, I used to be Congress Restaurant, now I've come to Africa. And one time I used to be the manager. I'm even surprised that two, two years ago, there was no noise. I'm surprised that this, that neighbors complaining about the noise. Actually, the real problem is that that place is that it's very, very small, and it's the only restaurant, African restaurant in Enbourn. We like the food, I like the food there for my family, but the only problem is that we don't have the space. In the evening, when a lot, like on the weekend, a lot of family want to go out and eat over there, this is going to be crowded, and most of the people are going to be out in the parking, especially in the back parking. And that's probably going to cause a problem, especially with the noise, because the back door will be open, probably the music will come out. Because there is a little bit of music there, because we like the, the African music they play there, especially from Cameroon. And I came here to support Atte to expand, because I think he's going to solve some of the problem, he's going to contain all the people inside. And one of the serious problems is the bathroom, the bathroom situation, which is our, just only one bathroom for the ladies and one bathroom for the men, and most of the town people, they're just going to try to eat themselves in the backyard. And I saw what he's trying to do with the place, it's something I have back then when I was running the place through, is try to find a way to expand. Basically, he's trying to make more bathrooms. And even, like, the sitting area is so small, you know, people basically don't have place to sit, they're going to be standing up, and that's the reason why people think it's, it looks more like a nightclub. But basically, we go there to, to enjoy the food, because I know the food, I used to run the place, the food, only the primary reason why as African we go over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Song Theodore, Prince Kenneth Epi, and Alfonso Te.
Honorable councilors, my name is Chief Song Theodore. The chief is basically a title, because I'm a traditional ruler. In fact, as a matter of fact, when I came here today, I, I never knew I was going to come and meet honorable gentlemen and ladies like this, because I wouldn't bend the way I'm looking now, in the very casual mode, this is the way I normally look when I go to a restaurant and try to have a relaxed time, because that is the only spot I have around, that I go there with my family once in a while. Some of you would understand, I do understand that the problem the neighbors here try to put forth, honestly, is sympathetic if that's happening, but I think that can be taken care of, it could be solved. You know, I think what we need to do is, how do we solve that problem? How do we make sure there's no noise? As you heard some of my brothers here say, space is the main thing. If they have enough accommodation, everybody is going to be contained in that accommodation, and you will have nobody outside there making noise, and there will be peace. And I won't state emphatically here, that that place is basically a restaurant. And those of us who've come here from Africa, we have a major problem here, that feeding is one of our problems. And you know the nature of this country, that some of us have come here to meet, which is honestly, people here work so hard, we have to come into that to work hard. And when you work that hard, the next thing you need is to relax. If you don't relax, it can get you into some other kind of, you know, atmosphere or a situation where, honestly, it can get you mental. That's why sometimes you find people bad. This is a major place for those of us who've come here from Africa. It gives us a very relaxed atmosphere. I think honestly, we plead, I personally plead to the council people to consider this, consider our problem. I think this can be solved. One, if they increase the space of that restaurant, it's going to contain everybody and people will be hanging out there. Secondly, like, they had them talk about the toilet system. One toilet enough is not, alone is not enough for, for the men, I mean, one for the men and one for the women is not enough for, for the population that comes there every time. If they can increase the place, we will have enough toilets to take care of the people, enough seating accommodation to take care of those who want to come in there for the restaurant and eat their, their meal. I also want to accept the fact that there could be music, which they said disturbed them. But the point two is that we Africans love music a lot, and sometimes we love loud music, but that can be contained, it could be soundproofs and everything, and this problem will all be solved. I think all they need to do is give him guidelines as to what should be done, to make sure that this problem is taken care of, instead of getting us out of a situation where we may not have a place to really have a comfortable place to, you know, have some relaxation after hard days of work. So we crave your indulgence to think of this and try. Thanks a lot, sir.
It's Prince Kenneth Epi, Alfonso Te, and Catherine Tunis.
Good evening, and good evening to everybody. I'm the owner, I would like him to speak first before I speak last.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kenneth Epi. I live in nine forty North Hampton Drive, up in New Hampshire here. Unfortunately, we have a situation like this, just like the gentleman before me just explained. I understand the concern about the neighbors, but I also want to let the audience know that sometimes people have to go through orientation. And I believe at this point, if we have a problem that we're having, the owner of the restaurant have a little bit of responsibility to do, and that is to make sure he orientates some of the customers that are coming there, that America do have rules and regulations, and we have to follow that. We have to respect neighbors, and we have to respect other customers. So the point of expanding the restaurant, I spoke to him about a year and a half ago, when I used to visit there, I noticed the place was too small. So like I told him, I said, it's going to be a day I'm going to take you to go visit other restaurants. This way you can see how the facilities are laid out, and how everybody can come in and enjoy a peaceful environment when they want to have dinner or lunch with their family. So the question of noise, like I said again, orientation is the key. We can talk to some of the customers that are coming there, that if you have to go smoke, go outside, smoke your cigarette, and come back and enjoy your meal, since, you know, they don't allow smoking in there. So I believe some of these people that go outside to smoke, it's like taking a smoke break and they'll take a longer smoke break. So we will try to orientate the people to know that we have neighbors, so they don't disturb people because they have to go to work, they have other things they have to do, their kids have to go to sleep. But, and the idea of food, I mentioned to the owner that I have experience in the restaurant industry, and I would like to help him so we can bring in more menu, so it'll meet, you know, varieties of people that would like to come in, they're not only Africans. So we have put in place a little bit of menu, which I'm sure some of you guys will read the little pamphlet that was put out. That's a new menu that's going to be coming out. And when you got a menu like that, a lot of people going to be attracted to come out. So we need a little bit more space. We need that expansion in the kitchen, expansion in the bathroom, so people can be able to use the bathroom. And, you know, I just want to appeal to the neighbors. We apologize. We want to try to do something about it. You know, if you guys can give him a chance, and give everybody a chance. Now the economy is real tight, I don't think it would be a good judgment to shut down a place and put a lot of people out of work. Well, we can improve the place and hire more people, but we try to make sure the noise is down last night. So that's okay, that's all I want to appeal to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alfonso Te, Catherine Tunis, and Gil Winters.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come up again, to explain to you my cause. I am very pleased to hear from neighbors about my restaurant. I must, I say, hear that this is the first time I hear a neighbor complain. And this is the first time anybody talked, told me that my activity has problems in the neighborhood. I've had police calls, people called police, but most of the time, the calls came from the restaurant because of either an incident or so. I've never had a neighbor come to me to tell me that, look, what I'm doing is not good for, for the community. I would have loved to know that before now, I would have been, I've worked extra hard to, to solve any problem that they are facing. Responding to one of the comments made by one of the neighbors who came to my restaurant, I very much recognize him, because I'm the one who served him. When he came, he was around ten thirty or so, and he sat at the bar and asked for a glass of wine, I gave him a glass of wine. And then he started talking to me about, asking about the place, the food, and whatnot. I went in depth to explain to him about African food, and I told him, we would like to incorporate other food apart from African food, because some other people come to our restaurant who are not, who are not Africans, and they want to eat something familiar. And that's the reason we are looking for this expansion, because it will help us increase our kitchen, which will give us a much, a better opportunity to have other varieties of food, and then serve more food than we are doing right now. I have a record, I have, for the fifty, fifty percent food serving, I, for my one year, I, I did all my best to have to maintain that record, because we tried to be, make sure our kitchen is open at all time, the doors open, and that helped us to serve some food. But we would have done better if we had a, a bigger kitchen, which would have permitted us to have, you know, food, variety of food items. So at that point, it's our restroom. Our restroom is too small, and some people can go out, and this is why because of that. And if we expand, we're going to create more restroom, people don't have to go out. And the main thing is the, the size of the restaurant is so small that people tend to go out most of the time, and that can be one of the costs, they have the noise. If we have a larger restaurant, people stay in, and they will get seated. I, I'll end here, because I have not much time. I hope I have another time to say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Tunis, and then Gil Winters.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, I live a few blocks away from the restaurant, but I remember hearing all the problems years ago about a nightclub in that neighborhood, and I'm sorry to hear from my neighbors that there are similar noise problems and late night business issues going on there, so I'm here to support them. I'd like to say the first responsibility of a restaurateur is to create an ambiance within the restaurant, of the kind of attitudes and the kind of experience that they want their clientele to have. And I believe that the client, the ambiance here is not Mrs. Case, it's not Mark's Kitchen, and it's not Roscoe's. It's not a restaurant, it's a bar, and it's a nightclub. And that's, that's not what I think that we want in our neighborhood. And that's not what I think that we want in our neighborhood. How to solve the problem? The hours are too late. The hours of the restaurant supposedly are 2:00 PM to 1:00 AM. If somebody's there until 1:00 AM, they're not going to be getting up and working hard the next day. So if they want to have a restaurant, they should be, that they're serving breakfast, lunch, dinner, they can be starting at 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, and they should be, the hours should be no later than 10:00 PM. I think it's imperative that in a residential neighborhood, adjacent to residents, people should be have quiet time from at least 10:00 PM on, so that they can get a good night's sleep, and that they can do their jobs the next day. This is what they've paid for, this is what they pay their taxes for, so have a nice, calm, quiet, peaceful neighborhood to live in. I think that the issue is the alcohol. It's not necessarily the restaurant, it's not necessarily the food, it's not necessarily the space. But the alcohol in a restaurant should be there to enhance the dining experience, but it seems that in this restaurant, the food is just there to enhance the drinking experience, and I don't think that's what we want. There's a survey in there of the materials that were here, and it was a survey of adjacent businesses, it was not a survey of residents who live in that neighborhood. I think we want businesses in our neighborhood that support the local residents, that don't support people coming from far away to party late at night, where they can go home peacefully and leave all the noise and bad feelings behind. I don't think that's what we want in our neighborhood. It seems to me that the alcohol is the problem. They don't need alcohol license to serve breakfast, to serve lunch, to serve dinner. The alcohol is lowering the inhibitions of the clientele, it is not helping them to become acclimated to the American culture or to learn. I encourage the city council to oppose expanding the alcohol license. I don't think it's a problem to expand the restaurant space as long as it is a restaurant without alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I actually, I am Gil Winters. I do not have a public comment at this point.
Okay. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you all for your testimony. The next item on our agenda is a work session discussion of the request. Councilmember Clay, did you want to go first, or Councilmember Wright his comments?
No, I'm happy to go first.
Okay.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank the residents for coming out at such short notice, and I want to particularly thank Betty Thompson for organizing everybody. It was really terrific to have somebody who had the emails of all the neighbors, and that was really helpful in getting the word out, and I very much appreciate, I very much appreciate that and the efforts of the other residents. I also appreciate the Come to Africa folks for coming out and spending the time to talk about the restaurant. I think that there's, as we said at the meeting last week, that there's been a definite effort on the part of the restaurant owners to make a change in the way that the business is operated, to hire security. And I think that even though that has been the case, it's clear that there's a significant impact on the neighbors in the neighborhood. And I think that when you look at the totality of what's happening, that this impact on the neighbors is significant. When this came last week, I saw it, and I thought, gosh, you know, I've heard a little bit from the neighbors, but not much recently, and I think it's just one of those kind of ongoing things that sort of wears you down after a while. But I would have to say that I think that the restaurant could have done a better job of reaching out to the neighbors also, in looking for information and trying to communicate with folks rather than trying to represent the neighbors as the local business neighbors. I think what, one of the things that has, some of the things that have come clear from the testimony is that the real operating hours of the establishment, you know, begin at 11:00 PM, and they go on till 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. That has been borne out by not only the several of us who visited, I visited, I took my mother, she's 76, she had coke, I had a beer, and went with a couple of the other council members, and we were there between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, and there were a couple of people who came in. Other neighbors have said that they have gone to the restaurant in the hours between 6:00 o'clock and 10:30, and there hasn't been anybody essentially in the restaurant. So I think, you know, the real operating hours begin at 11:00, and that's part of the problem. The neighborhood isn't really appropriate for a kind of an operation that begins at 11:00 o'clock and goes on till 4:00 in the morning. When I was, when I was a kid, I used to play in a rock band, played the drums, and I played in a lot of bars, and I played in a lot of restaurants. And I think the first thing that struck me about the sound system was that I could have really used that for some of the amphitheaters that we played in. But, gosh, that's bigger than any place that I ever played in, six times as large as the space for that restaurant. I live at the corner of Lincoln and Hayward, so I can't hear it, but I can only imagine how loud, you know, that has to be for the people who are behind there. That's a lot of, that's a lot of power, and it doesn't, it doesn't match a restaurant, and it doesn't match, I think, the neighborhood. And I think the issue about, some of the issues I think could be solved too without expanding the business, or could have been solved before looking to expand the business. My understanding is that other restaurants have operated there, and they've been able to serve food effectively without having the problem of the slow turnover. I noted when we visited the restaurant that there were two really huge refrigerators in the kitchen, and I, you know, I wonder about the ratio of refrigerator space to the, you know, the three microwaves and the stove. And it just, it seems like there are a lot of things where the approach has been about sort of preserving the 11 to 4:00 AM experience first, and then coming back to how do we get people to come to the restaurant either at lunch or dinner secondarily. So I think I would be supportive of efforts to turn it into a restaurant, but I don't know that the way to go about that is to, you know, go through an expansion with additional restrooms and an expanded space without seeing that there really is an ability for the business itself to draw people in at the dinner hour, at the lunch hour. I mean, really, I don't see a reason now why people wouldn't come to the place for lunch or for dinner. There's, what's the impediment there? But people aren't coming. And so I think until you can make an argument that you can bring business in for lunch or dinner, it's hard to imagine that what we're really talking about here is a restaurant, but in fact is a nightclub. I mean, at the essence, that's what it is. It's a bar, and it's a nightclub, and for that reason, I wouldn't support an expansion of the license at this time.
Councilmember Wright?
First, I have a question. I don't remember this coming before us when the original license was applied for. Was that before I was on the council under a different name of a restaurant, or?
No, this, often the licenses simply are, are applied for through the Board of License Commissioners, and the information about which things are coming up are, I believe, are sent to council, and if somebody says we want to talk about them, that's when they come for you. But it has not been, you know, or if it's an item where, on the list, where it's a challenge, why this license should be allowed to continue, you know, then I'd make an affirmative call to the council member who knows what it is, or if I've heard of problems about that in the past. The way that the information gets out is kind of, it just shows up on their monthly agenda, so I don't know what happened when it first turned over from Congress Restaurant to Come to Africa Restaurant.
So I would suggest as a policy decision, I think this is a learning experience for us. I know that when liquor licenses have come up to be asked for in my ward, the ones I'm thinking about most recently are Olive Lounge and...
Roscoe's.
Roscoe's. I don't know if everyday gourmet had to apply for a new one, or if they already had one or not. But it was definitely on the council agenda, the owners came and talked to us. So I would suggest first as a policy perspective, anytime there's someone applying for a license in the city, that is proactively presented to the council, and the council, be made aware of that and make a statement, and allow for a public hearing to hear from residents. So what I do as I think about this is I shut my eyes, and I think about if I lived in one of those houses that is in close proximity to the resident, to the restaurant, or if the Olive Lounge or Roscoe's had been applying for a liquor license, and all of the residents who lived in close proximity came and said they didn't want the liquor license to be in existence there, I would have a hard time voting in favor of it. When Roscoe's came forward, I think there might have been one or two of 13 or 14 people who objected or had concern. So to me, I really can't support having the license for the expanded area. And what I would say to the restaurateurs, you know, I went to the restaurant with Colleen and had some of the similar observations, is that we're not the ones who need to be convinced. You have to convince the residents so that when you come before us to ask for the license, the residents are saying, at least the majority of the residents are saying, yeah, that's cool, they addressed the issues, we're okay with this. And I, we're far, far from that at this point. So at this point, I can't really support that. I hope that you'll continue to make a diligent effort to improve the restaurant, improve the situation, and win over the neighbors to a different opinion.
Councilmember Robinson?
I was also at the restaurant the other night with the councilmember Clay and Wright, and I know that councilmember Schultz was there that same day too. So we really turned out and forced to kind of get a sense of what the restaurant was like, and I was impressed. I liked the food, I liked the ambiance, it felt like a kind of homey, in a sense, it felt, not homey is the wrong word maybe, but comfortable. And although it wasn't rocking out, it had a certain calmness to it inside, I appreciated that. There were three TVs going, and sports going on, and music going on, and there weren't, there wasn't anyone at the time. And I remember my father always saying that running a restaurant is the hardest business you can engage in, the hardest business, and I was, I'm attuned to that as well. I have one restaurant in my ward that has had a noise problem, and it's not even in Montgomery County, it's across the street in Prince George's County, across New Hampshire Avenue, and just by a fluke, the speakers that the proprietor puts outside to give a Caribbean ambiance goes right across New Hampshire Avenue, right up the hill near Advance Auto, and lands like it's a shotgun in several neighbors' living rooms. And it's, I went to the Caribbean Gardens a number of times, and they did turn it down, which was very much appreciated, although it's a kind of continuing struggle. I recognize all the comments that you two have made, and I don't want to say those again. It's a cultural versus city kind of issue, seems to me. The Cameroonian culture is working together, and I've heard Mr. Ate say that he wants to address how they party, not as late, bring it far closer into the day, or introduce different kinds of food. So, and I think those are all good things. But I think at this point, I'm going to defer and try and agree with councilmember Wright, find out a way to see if there can be more communication with the neighbors, and see if there's a way to come to a spot where people are in agreement that this license ought to be granted, as opposed to trying to override the neighbors or the people who live there. So that's where I will come down.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. I know this subject is important to everyone in the room. And speaking of the room, I think I might be the last person in the room that anybody would expect to support this, you know, the expansion of liquor license. But I think, I think there is a compromise. I think what we heard from the neighborhood is that they're upset about having a nightclub in their neighborhood, but I also heard several of the residents say they would be supportive of a restaurant. And I heard Mr. Addy say that he has a restaurant, he wants a restaurant, that's what he's doing, he's not, in fact, last week, you told me that it's not a nightclub, what it is is a restaurant. So I think with everybody saying that a restaurant's what they want, it seems like there's a compromise there, that, and I didn't be willing to support the liquor license if that compromise was struck. And I think that one of the things is that a restaurant probably closes about 11:00 at night, right? And I think it's the late hours and loud music is the problem. So I guess what I'm saying is that, no, I'm not supportive of the liquor licenses, you've presented the request to this council, and if you applied for it with the county. But if you truly want a restaurant, I would encourage you to modify your application, modify your business plan, and bring it back to the community.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out, because I didn't, certainly was not going to make a judgment on this until we had heard from the community as to their feelings about this, and certainly heard that tonight. As has been mentioned, and as Mr. Ate knows, you know, I went to visit the restaurant, I guess, I don't remember exactly which day it was, and spent about an hour or more in the restaurant, and had a very interesting conversation with Mr. Ate and his sister in the middle of the afternoon, and saw the kitchen, saw the restrooms, went next door and saw the space that's, has, you've signed a lease for it, as well as the basement space in that adjacent building. Went out in the back in the parking lot to look at that and the scale of it, and the availability of parking. Of course, it was daytime, so I couldn't assess the brightness of the lights, but just basically got a feel for it, and we had some pretty, a very useful conversation, and quite honestly, I, my feeling is, is that Mr. Ate is what we call a straight shooter. I think he's very honest in everything that he told me, and about his intentions, and the reason he wants to expand, and how he believes that that expansion will solve all of these problems, which is what some of the other testimony is, supports. And I think it probably will solve the problem, or at least it could, let's put it that way. So thank you for all of your time. I sincerely appreciate your time and the willingness to talk about it. But, you know, there's a saying that's probably familiar to all of us, or most of us, that something that looks like a duck, walks like a duck, and quacks like a duck, is a duck. And in my view, is that what we have here is a, basically a nightclub that serves food. And it may be terrific food, I'll leave others to decide that. And I heard people say, well, this is one of the really good places to get food that's truly West African and not East African, and they are very limited such spots around, in that they take their family there for, to eat. But there was nobody in the restaurant eating when I was there, and as was, has been noted in your own, in Mr. Ate's own remarks, is that it's just, he's found it very frustrating to try to get people to come in in the middle of the day, or early dinner, and that people don't show up until late, what I would consider to be late at night. I find it hard to imagine a family going to dinner with their kids at 11:00 at 11:00 o'clock at night, or 12, or midnight, or beyond. It just doesn't make any... It just doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm not sure that any culture supports that. But be that as it's may, that's what I've been, that's what's been explained to me. The thing that, I guess the thing that I have is that I think that if, by approving this license at this time, is putting the cart in front of the horse. I think what I would like to see is, is getting this restaurant to operate in a way that functions like most restaurants, and that most of us patronize on a regular basis. I went online today to look at the availability of other West African restaurants in the, in this region, and I found that the Roger Miller Restaurant on Bonafont Avenue, which prides itself on its West African and Cameroon menu, is open seven days a week, from 11:00 in the morning till 9:30 at night. That the Bukum Cafe in Adams Morgan is open seven days a week, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And that's, but that's in Adams Morgan, which is an area that's notorious for a whole blocks of, of nightclubs and, and restaurants, unlike, unlike the 6800 block of New Hampshire The Pejus Restaurant is another one that's in Baltimore, in the west side of the city, and it's, operates Monday through Saturday, generally from, from 11:00 in the morning till 9:00 o'clock at night, and has a full bar. So it seems to be able to serve its clientele within normal hours. And I would also point out that the Walea Ethiopian Restaurant, which is in the same shopping center, I understand it's an Ethiopian, and that's a different cuisine altogether than what you're, have on your menu, is open from 11:00 to 11:00 every day, seven days a week, and has a full bar. And I haven't heard any testimony here from anybody that that restaurant causes, is an irritant to, to the neighbors. So I'm, I'm convinced that if you want to make this into a true restaurant, it doesn't need to start business at 10:00 p.m. at night and run to 3:00, or whatever it is in the morning, in order to be successful. And I, that's, and I think that, if you can get that modified, so that you're changing your hours, so that you, you are more in concert with the other kinds of restaurants that we're all familiar with, during normal restaurant hours, then I could easily support the expansion of, of, of your liquor license to the adjacent space. But based on the evidence, I, I have to concern myself primarily with the residents who live there. Those are their, that's where they bought their houses, that's where they, their major investment is, that's what, that's their home, they can't go somewhere else. And I, I, I think you've, you've got a, all the, all the, after talking to you, all the, the ability to make these changes, the smarts, the restaurant know-how, to figure out how to do that, and I'd like to see you do that, to, to get this to turn around and to be a true restaurant, and not a nightclub that has, that requires outside security to control the crowds, that has to have bright lights to protect the parking lot, and all the other things that are typically associated with, with a nightclub operation. So I don't want to, you know, slam the door and say never, but I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Simmons, that, you know, that working together over the next six months or year, or however long it takes, you know, that maybe the operation can be changed, and we can, we can help see you achieve your, your goals at that location.
Councilmember Simmons, you have another comment?
Just quickly, I just wanted to reassure Mr. Addy that, you know, the city council and city staff are very interested in successful small businesses within the city, and want to be supportive of our business owners in the city. And Barb, I wonder if, if Mr. Addy decides to take a different approach with the business, if maybe our economic development staff might not be able to give him some help. Okay? So think about that, you could approach Ms. Matthews, and see what kind of assistance the city staff can give you in developing a business plan that fits more in, in line with, with community desires, and still is a successful operation in, in what you want to do.
Okay, I think that there's, oh, go ahead.
You told me I didn't need to turn on my light.
Apparently you do.
I was saying something different.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to echo many of the comments of my fellow council members, so I'll be brief. I'm very supportive of the idea of a restaurant there. I liked several of the previous restaurants that were in that location. I also have several restaurants in my ward, small restaurants in my ward, I'm in Ward Five, along Flower Avenue, there's a number of them. And these tend to be Latin American restaurants, and they're not known for early hours. And there is a tradition of people going to dinner in Latin America starting at 10:00 p.m. People have lunch in the middle of the afternoon, and go for a dinner at 9:00 or 10:00 at night. And so it's very common to have restaurants that are open quite late. These restaurants make a lot of effort to keep the people inside, to control the noise, to make sure that the, that the neighbors and those who are outside have a quiet, interesting place to, to be. And I think it's entirely, so my point is, I think it's entirely possible to have a successful restaurant that is open fairly late, that does serve wine and beer, and other alcohol, but manages to keep the noise and crowds inside. So I am supportive of, of the restaurant as a restaurant. I'm not too keen on having a nightclub that has fights, that have people, as the police indicated, lots of problems outside, either urinating or whatever. And I am very interested in waiting to see, the bottom line is, I'm very interested in waiting to see a couple things. One is, a little more time to see if the decline in complaints lasts for a period of time, to see that in fact, these issues have been addressed. I think Mr. Arte's been very forthright in working on these, and I applaud his efforts. It takes a time, a certain amount of time for the clientele to get used to the new rules, as it were, and I think we need to allow a little bit of that to go on. I do have a concern about the space, particularly access for handicapped folks. I do hope that the restaurants and other parts of the facility can be made accessible. But the bottom line is, I would like to wait and see, until the changes in the security and other changes that you've proposed have a chance to work out and, and see that they in fact have an impact in reduction in noise and fights and crowding outside, and the other problems that the police identified.
I think there's unanimity on the council, that now is not the time for us to state our, our support for approval of an expanded liquor license at this location. I think there's also unanimity that there's the potential for the business there to be successful. I think that what we'll need to do is to have the staff draft a resolution for next week stating our opposition. Is there anything in particular that the council wants to see in there, if you can get with staff?
If you can let me know. I also, well, when the Board of License Commissioners received the letter saying, hold off on this, my understanding is that there was no deadline by which, you know, the applicant needed to come back to the board. It's fine to do the resolution next week, and I'll draft it, but one of the pieces of information I'll try to get to you this week is, is there a sense about when they need to make a decision by? It may be something that there's some flexibility, and the owner may wish to kind of defer going back to the board for a little bit. So I'm just, I don't know how that works, it's not something that I really talked out, but I, I just want to raise it as, we weren't given a definite date that we had to get something back to the board.
Okay, if you can get that information, that would be helpful. Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, I think in the resolution, I would like to suggest that we have something in there to indicate that the city has programs or acts, or can refer the applicant to programs to assist with physical improvements to the building, and assist with financing, like the Community Legacy Program, just to name one, and to encourage the owner to take advantage of those, and encourage the city staff to offer that help.
Councilmember Snibber.
Yeah, thank you for that comment, Ms. Lovlo. I do wonder if there isn't an opportunity here to delay action for a short while until we see if there have been any improvements in the number of complaints, the noise, et cetera.
Councilmember Clay.
Well, it seems to me like the purpose of our resolution is to communicate to the, what's it called, the Board of License, Board of Licensing?
Board of License Commissioners.
I was going to say ABC, but, okay. So the, the Board of Licensing Commissioners, what our position is on the, on the alcohol license, I mean, the, the other components of it, what the city does and the support that it provides, I don't think are, are that relevant to the licensing process. And I think that, you know, what I heard from residents pretty loud and clear is that they're not interested in supporting a license for the key reasons that the real operating hours of the establishment are from, you know, 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, because it seems clear that the, that the restaurant moniker, the 50/50 food ratio, doesn't seem to be what is actually happening. I thought Catherine Tunis actually stated it very well, that in a restaurant, the alcohol is there to enhance the food experience, not the other way around. And that it continues to be loud, and have problems particularly in the back parking lot, that are a huge impact on the neighbors, and that the expansion, at this time, there's no reason to believe that the expansion would make that worse.
Councilmember Wright.
I just want to echo Councilmember Clay, I think we should just be very clear and straightforward and simple with the board, that at this time, we don't support the license. It's not one of those things where they're going to understand some subtlety, they just want to know whether we support it or not, and if the owner comes back with a different plan, or, to, I think what I actually heard a lot of convinces the residents there's some other model of a restaurant that would, that worked there, then they can reapply, we can, and we can say we support what they're coming forward with now. I don't think we should be vague about it, because that may lead the board up to some interpretation of what we mean, or maybe that proposal gets modified at some point. So I just think we should be straightforward and say we don't support at this point, in terms of that communication. We're totally on board with all the other resources that are available, and conversations that would ha, should happen with residents, if people want, if the owner wants to pursue a different business model.
Anybody else? I think that gives you the direction you need for the resolution.
And I'll, and I'll correspond with Councilmember Clay on the language to bring forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And we'll take a short break.[1491.03] We're back. And we're now on our first item on the regular meeting agenda, which is a resolution submitting annual program for program open space funds. Who's gonna?
I'd like to present this. Every year, we submit to Montgomery County, which then in turn, Montgomery County Park and Planning, which then return, in turn submits to the state, the annual program for spending program open space funds in Montgomery County. And we usually have a list of various projects that we wish to work on and find out from the state the certain amount of program open space money that we get. We were surprised a couple of weeks ago to get a phone call from Park and Planning saying that we had $316,000 showing up in their accounts. We're still surprised about that. I'm not sure that it's correct, but on the other hand, if it's there and it's allocated for us, we should be submitting something and keep it in our hands. So I wanted to make sure that we filed in our annual program. There was only one item in our budget for use of program open space in the coming year, and that was the Bell Ziegler filled sprinklers for $60,000. What we recommend is, at least as a placeholder on the annual program, that we put the remaining funds allocated to potential land acquisition and development around Sligo Mill, Poplar Mill Park. And the idea here is that there is a property off of Poplar that is a, is kind of, we have a little bit of an easement and outfall of the storm drain there. It's a very small property. It may be something that we can acquire. And if that property were acquired or a portion of it were acquired, there'd be an opportunity for a small parking area off of Poplar Avenue, and it's the best location for an eventual little pedestrian bridge over the Tacoma branch. So those plans are years out. Nevertheless, it is something that we might consider exploring. And having something on the program is important to hold it in place. We can change it if we need to change it. Any expenditure on program, with program open space funds does require a 25% match from the general fund. We do have that amount allocated for the Bell Ziegler sprinklers. If we were to do something else, we would need to allocate that with a budget amendment.
And if, is there a potential Plan B if that property isn't, doesn't work out?
You know, we have to do a little more investigation. Our understanding is that we're not allowed to do kind of just basic maintenance of that parkland, but there may be some real clearing projects that have been on our list to explore, to see if we could get permission to use POS funds for those. So I think there's some, there's a variety of items. We have not spent the time on it to identify what those are, but we've been given an extension through July to get our annual program in, which is usually due at the beginning of July. And so I'd like to get something filed with Montgomery County and with the state.
Right, yeah. And it would be good if we do a little to explore whether we could do some, some kind of heightened maintenance things in there because I know that that was originally acquired more than 10 years ago?
Maybe about that.
And, and there have been some ideas about what to do in there, but I think basically nothing has happened.
We've done a good amount of removing some invasive species and some clearance stuff. There's a lot more to do, but we've been making some, some positive steps there that I think, you know, we intend to continue with. But if we have an opportunity to take a big hunk at it, that'd be really nice.
That would be good. Thanks. Councilmember Robinson?
What's the story on the home up there that we got it? Didn't we agree that we would pay for demolishing it if Park and Planning bought the home?
Right. The property at 6502 Sligo Mill Road has been acquired by a company, and they are moving on finalizing the acquisition and doing the demolition. The agreement is then they turn it over to Park and Planning, and we reimburse for the cost of the demolition. That sounds like it's going, it's moving forward. It'll probably take a few months, but that does seem to be moving forward. That is on the other side. It's not what I'm referring to with this proposal.
I'm just, I'm circling around. Where would the parking lot be?
When you're coming down Poplar and it starts to curve around.
There are a couple of houses right there.
Right, just past the houses is where there might be an opportunity for kind of an indented area for parking.
Okay. And then is that where the bridge would be?
Yes, close to there.
So it would go uphill? Would it go over? But it's pretty steep right there.
I can't say exactly because there's a good amount of fill, and so what's uphill and what would have to be cleared out, I'd have to, we'd have to find out.
But the idea would be to get, let pedestrians get up to the?
To the other side of the Tacoma branch.
To the bottom of Sligo Mill Road.
That's right.
I see. Okay. And so there, it's a bridge to somewhere.
Sure. I mean, part of the idea is to enjoy the natural.
I wouldn't want to support a bridge to nowhere. That's just my only point I'm trying to make.
On the other hand, it's a natural area, so it's to enjoy the natural area.
Got it. And this, we're talking, some years out, we're talking some years out. Okay. Thank you. I support that allocation.
Councilmember Schultz?
Can any of this program open space money be used for non-capital expenses? In other words?
No.
It's another word, okay. Cannot.
You can acquire property and you can build things.
Okay. And improve things.
Right. It has to be a capital type.
Okay. All right. Then I need not pursue any further questions.
Councilmember Clay?
I just, I wanted to say that there's some interest in Ward Two, in the property that runs alongside Woodland Avenue, the lower end of Woodland Avenue, which is currently attached to the Washington McLachlan School, which has a pseudo creek running through it and is apparently a zone for buildable lots. I don't know whether anyone could actually build on it. It's probably only worth transferring the development rights off of it. And the other property that people have actually expressed some interest in the city acquiring is the corner of Ethan Allen and Jackson. Several people have talked about it, is acquiring it as a community garden space. So I just throw those out there as well.
Okay. Any other comments on this resolution? Would somebody like to move the resolution? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Wright?
I just want to be clear, even though it sounds like there's one thing that we have in the budget, but the other, the Sligo Mill, we could change it later on if we decided there was some more pressing issues.
That's right. And then we just file that amendment with the county.
Would somebody like to move the resolution?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any further discussion? Any public discussion of this resolution? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We'll now move to our second reading resolution amending the Tacoma Park Charter, Article Two, Section 202, Description of Corporate Boundaries. I'll look to the City Manager again, I assume.
It's the straightforward changing the charter to represent the boundary change you've already made.
I'd like to move this first.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Any council comments? Any public comment? It's a second reading resolution. We'll, please call or roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Does anybody else notice how that's a very odd item to have, a second reading resolution?
Right.
We do have second reading resolutions.
Yeah, we do, but it's unusual.
Annexations and chartering.
Right. So that passes unanimously. Next is a first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 210, 12 Administrative Regulations. Just going to do a little intro on this one, just to make sure everybody knows what we're doing here.
I could say a word about the first one. As the council discussed when it was talking about the related ordinance that would allow for adoption of administrative regulations for use of public spaces, it seemed that there was a desire to amend the administrative regulations ordinance to require that committees, relevant committees are given the opportunity to comment on administrative regulations before they're issued to council and to the public. So this change, the city attorney has looked at this, and this change would, you'll see in 212050 on Page Two, is the section that would provide that opportunity for city boards to comment on a regulation. And then the city attorney did suggest a number of other changes, minor changes to the ordinance. And staff did want to note that the last time this was discussed, there was, it was noted that the entire ordinance needs a bit of work, but staff suggestion at this time is let's get this change made and then proceed in the fall with the more full revision of the ordinance. So that's what's before you this evening.
Somebody like to move the ordinance?
Move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember, who?
Robinson.
Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to provide for adoption of administrative regulations for use of public space and public buildings. I'm just going to do, looking, just looking to Ms. Daines.
This amendment in the cover memo, the second reading ordinance was. Would allow the city manager to establish administrative regulations that would govern many of the things that are currently included in the ordinance. The proposed amendment, if approved upon, on second reading, would change the title of the section and would also allow for the establishment of the regulations we've referenced regarding the use of public facilities. The second section would not go into effect until after the administrative regulations were finalized. And what I've included in your cover memo under special considerations is a tentative schedule that we would use in the event this ordinance is accepted upon second reading.
Okay. Councilmember Robinson?
Ms. Daines, are we to understand that morals are being replaced by public space and that conduct is being replaced by public buildings?
Sounds like a lot more fun than, yes, we are.
Are you sure you want to go forward with this? I'm just checking.
You're right.
Would somebody like to move this?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Any further council comments? Any public comments? It's a second reading ordinance, we'll, please call or roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Next is a first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Title 12, Trees and Vegetation. Public Works Director is here.
Good evening. This all ties back to discussions you had much earlier in the year relative to the tree ordinance and the items that are before you tonight relate to the, to the changes to the ordinance that the council decided upon that required code changes in ordinance language. There were two, one being the creation of the pre-planting program to give residents the ability to get credit for trees planted in advance of a removal, and the other was the process by which notice of the city's tree ordinance would be included in the package of information that purchasers sign and go through when they're purchasing property in Tacoma Park. So this basically sets up that process to occur through the real estate transactions. So those are the two items that are addressed in the draft ordinance language you have attached to this this evening.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. I've got two quick questions for clarification. On page four, numbers, like four and, or I guess number five, basically when you sell the house, the, it's not, this is transferable?
That's the way we've established it in the beginning. Our recommendation to the city attorney was to keep the program fairly straightforward and simple, not involved in a lot of transferability or, you know, planting in different locations, that we just establish the program and work within it and see how it works for the folks that are, take advantage of it. And then as, you know, over time, if it becomes apparent that the residents are interested in carrying over transfer credits, then that could be looked at, given that it's a fairly complex process that will require people's, you know, understanding of what it is they're, they're getting permission or getting credit for. We think it'd be best to keep the program straightforward in the beginning.
Quick question.
On that? Sure.
So are you, I understood it to read that the credit goes with the owner, and so as long as the owner lived in Tacoma Park, they would retain the credit even if they moved to across the street or some other place?
They're, they're going to be applying for a credit for that tree that they'll have with them. And of course, when they want to do a removal, the arborist will go and check. If they've moved location, we'll have to get permission to go on the property that the tree was planted.
Yes, and that was my second.
But we didn't want to make it part of the real estate transaction, so the credit stayed with the new owner who may have no idea what was done by the previous owner.
And then my other question is, at the very end on page six, number six, my thought was that where it's about where to get additional information, and it says click on Parks and Gardens and then Trees are on City Code, I thought, gee, this is getting a little specific because the website is bound to change.
It's changed, yes.
And it might just be something about, you know, for example, currently you would do that or just?
It would be my recommendation.
Move it out entirely?
We just adopted it at the city webpage reference.
Yeah, because then they can navigate there and we don't have to worry about it.
Right. It should be fairly easy.
Added information.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe that's a friendly amendment to just strike that language. Other questions? I don't know who was first. Councilmember Snipper?
Couple of very small one, small ones. You've dealt with the ones I had. On Page Two, 12 dot 12 dot 100B, you have inches with the curly, the curly quote sign instead of the keyboard quote sign. You've pasted it in from Word in several places on B, C, and D. I would suggest removing the little quote signs entirely and using, because you have inches and feet anyway.
Yeah. My guess is that was intended to be a strikeout rather than a underline, but perhaps we'll check with that.
Could be.
Because they do have the language right beside it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clay?
Well, first, I wanted to say that I'm really happy that we've gotten to the point where we're voting on these. Yeah, I know, it's been a long, it's been a long road and I'm, I'm pretty happy about it. Would you want to say that I still think we're better off to keep the credit with the property than with the individual? How long does it take a one and a half inch caliper tree to become a tree that's protected under the tree ordinance?
That would be a question for Todd, but I'm trying to think back if we, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable answering that. My guess would, it would be, you know, five to 10 years.
Five to 10 years?
Mm-hmm.
Before it gets a four inch?
It's seven and five eighths inches in diameter.
Depends on the species, depends on the condition.
I was going to say, because I have, I have two, two trees that I think, I'm not sure if it's been three years, but at least two, and they're only about this big by now. I'd be really surprised if in five years they, I think it's a long time.
Yes. It will, it takes, get seven and five eighths inches in diameter, takes a long time.
It takes a long time. So, you know, if you, so you can make an investment in your tree and then if you move, there's not a lot of motivation for an existing property owner to leave the tree unless, of course, they get credit for other trees that come down in their yard. And I think that's part of the motivation, and I think that you, you get more benefit out of that by having it stay with the property rather than having it go with the, with the person who planted the tree. And I, I guess I never intended that it would be recorded in real estate transactions.
This won't be recorded in real estate transactions.
Right. But I thought, I heard that's, that's why you said you thought it would be better to have it go with the person than stay with the property, is you didn't want to get involved in the recordation of the, did I mishear that?
Yeah. The problem, as we see it for it staying with the property and not with the owner, is that the subsequent owner won't have any, will have less knowledge of the situation, will have less information about the tree, won't realize, won't take advantage of the credit. It will be, and the owner who invested the money might feel like they wanted to hold on to that credit for a removal that they may have. Either way.
I disagree, and I would do it the other way, and I'll just leave it at that.
We could establish a whole market for TDRs.
Yeah, but I think there, I think there are a fair number of reasons why it would work better the, the other way. I think the likelihood that the person will move outside of the bounds of Tacoma Park are high. I think the, the fact is that doing this is marketability for your property as well because you've already invested in the trees for your property for when you have trouble with trees later on. And we just got a letter from somebody on our, on the dais today about a guy who says he'd have to plant three trees to make up for his one tree that has about five years of life left in it. He's concerned about it. It's exactly the kind of situation where if somebody were to plant early and they could get credit, but that seems to me like it goes with the property and not with the person.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm glad this is here too, and I'm going to vote for it, but I think it's too complicated and I predict it will crash and burn in about 10 years.
Councilmember, anything you'd do last of these seven?
Yeah, right, if we can have.
Councilmember Schultz?
Council, the discussions come up here about whether the tree should be, stay with the property, go with the owner. The goal, it's got me to thinking of, the goal here is to plant trees the sooner the better so that they can better so that they can become part of the canopy. If the tree goes with the owner, or the credit goes with the owner and the owner moves, the new guy that comes in, as you point out, isn't going to know anything about it. He's going to look at that tree, which may not have grown a whole lot, because the way I look, if it starts at one and a half inches, the way you compound interest is that if it, if it's a 10% increase per year, it's going to take seven years to double in size. So in seven years, the tree will only be three inches in caliber. Still could be whacked down by the new owner and not violate the tree ordinance. And the new owner would never know the difference. He'd just say, oh, this is a tree that we don't, it's in the way, or whatever. We want to put a park, put a garden there. And so all of a sudden, a future piece of our tree canopy is gone. Somebody's got a credit, but I think then that means we're getting carried away with credits and forgetting the point of the ordinance, which is to grow trees, big ones. So that's just a thought, that I think we need to think about, what Councilmember Clay just talked about. The other thing, with regard to the notice that would be attached at real estate contracts of sale, how, I mean, it's great. I think that's a wonderful idea. How literally are we going to get settlement agents, settlement attorneys, brokers, and real estate agents to understand that this is part of the process and get it literally built into the process? Because settlements don't necessarily take place literally in Tacoma Park. They might take place at a settlement attorney's office and somewhere else in the metropolitan area. Do you sort of have a feeling for how that might work? How we'd get that actually?
I don't know the details. The city attorney would probably have to answer that best. It will be a legal document, so it will be legally required to be part of a sales transaction. And there will be notification to the Realtor Board, you know, that lists properties, and there'll be information distributed through that. There's a number of these types of sign-off that you've been told. Lead paint.
Rent stabilization.
Rent stabilization, you know, a number of other situations, similar situations, where it's become incorporated into the process. Clearly, you know, the more work that we do to get to local Realtors and make sure they're aware of this and make sure property owners are aware of it so they can continue to, you know, talk about it and it's, when it's still new, it'll help to get the spread.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Councilmember Ryan.
Two items. I totally agree that the credit should stay with the property. I think we're going to create more problems about signing with the owner because the guy's going to chop down, someone's going to chop down the tree who bought the house and the owner who thinks they have, I mean, the person who thinks they have the credit still is going to say, I have this credit, and the arborists are going to have to go back and inspect, and then the tree's going to be gone. It just seems all incentives get aligned much more effectively if it goes with the property. So I would make an amendment actually to change, I would like to make an amendment and vote on when we're at that point to change that, that language. I thought Fred's questions were good about the notice. I would just say there's probably about 10 real estate agents that sell 90% of the properties in Tacoma Park. So if we sit down with those 10 real estate agents, we'll be all set. Combine that with all you have to do is prosecute a couple of Class B municipal infraction violations for people who don't, and the notice will get out very quickly in the community of settlement attorneys and real estate agents to do that. I do think we should actually change the notice. I think this is a good example of us needing some plain English and a much simpler disclosure, basically. This is a, I'm assuming we're saying this would be the actual language in the disclosure. It's four, five sections, it looks like maybe, six sections. So maybe this is in there, but I think at the top it should say, you should be aware if you cut down a tree in Tacoma Park, or, you know, something very simple that basically says you could need to replace anywhere from one to 23 trees. If you want more information, call the city arborist or go to this number or this website. Just something very, very simple, because I think this is, people are signing a lot documents at a real estate transaction. I think it should be very clear. And Patrick even, who had this issue, said he was aware. He had looked it up and it said several trees. And then he had 23 trees, so it wasn't, it wasn't really good disclosure on our part. So that's, those are my few comments.
And if I can suggest that if we're in agreement on those changes, that we can have the language to vote on at second reading.
Is this the second reading? I thought this was the first.
At second reading. This is first reading. So we could vote on, we can vote on this tonight and make the changes at second reading.
I think we should be...
If we have the direction, if that's what we want. Councilmember Clay?
Well, I was going to suggest that we amend the ordinance so that the credit goes with the property instead of the person. So I'll just accept Josh's suggestions of friendly amendment to the initial motion then.
That's only okay with me if it's clear that that's Councilmember Clay's idea.
Absolutely. It's my idea.
And it gets a CC next to it.
All right. Who's second in this?
I don't remember.
I don't think it's been...
Councilmember Snipper.
Sure, I agree.
Is there agreement that that's what we want to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. With the provisor, that Colleen gets credit.
That's right, I get credit.
I want to give Josh the credit. Why don't we just make this the...
I think the credit flows with the mover. Any further comments? So we've got a, an amended resolution with the potential for a second amendment, which is the change, the additional language suggested by Councilmember Wright, which he gets credit for?
He gets credit for that.
Okay. On some, like a simple first sentence for that?
Well, I would think that in addition to the, you may have to plant a lot of trees if you want to cut one down. I think we also, I mean, part of the point of this would be there's a permit process required. You have to get a permit to remove a tree. And if you remove a tree in violation of getting a permit, you could be fined or prosecuted. So I think that's another important piece of the tree ordinance in addition to just the replanting.
So if we have a simple first sentence or heading or whatever it is, like 50 words or less that gets it all?
$10,000 or one year in jail.
We have to come to five council meetings in a row and stay until the end.
That'd be worse.
That'd be worse. I think that's twenty-five words or less. I've never heard fifty words or less.
Whatever.
Yeah, it'll be a challenge because, you know, we wouldn't want to put, you know, up to 21 trees, because then the next person through the door will have to plant 24 trees. So you don't want to get into naming a number. We could also say up to 3% of the existing tree canopy, whether or not that translates and people communicate or get what that means. You know, what's 3% of a huge tree? It actually turns into a lot, but we could try to go that approach. Because the ordinance says 1%, 2%, or 3% of the canopy is what's being replaced.
Why don't we just say that the person will get tarred and feathered and ridden out of town backwards on a donkey?
Big no-no. Got it.
Got it.
The person will have to run for city council. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of first rea, oh, public comment? Any public comment?
Come on.
Okay. All those in favor of this at first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously at first reading. And next we have first reading ordinance, many Tacoma Park code Title 13 Vehicles and Traffic Speed Humps. Another one of those things that we talked about a while ago that is coming back. Yours again.
Well, not too much more to say about this. I think the intention was to place a little more language in the code that set out some parameters, not necessarily restrictions or hard fast lines, but basically guidelines and parameters for residents as well as city staff to use when evaluating speed hump requests. So I see it as kind of a dual role of education for folks interested in traffic calming, that they could look through the code. And now instead of finding it in the definitions place where you, how far a speed hump has to be a part, it actually has a section of the code that lays out some standard practices related to speed hump location. And the council has gone through a list probably three times longer than this. These were the ones that folks selected. So these were the ones that the city attorney turned into code language. So that's what you have in front of you tonight. I think there's also in the package the existing code, so you see what we're working with, and then also some comments received from residents.
Councilmember Ryan.
So just kind of as a walkthrough, the petition process for a speed bump will remain the same.
Mm-hmm.
Someone comes to our esteemed city clerk and get a petition. It will be circulated up and down the street. The petition will come back to the city clerk. It'll come here, well, it's in Fred's ward and we'll all, we'll all vote for it because it's in Fred's ward. But before we do that, we'll look at this ordinance and say, well, wait a minute. The city engineer says it's not on a, not near a light and block, you can't see around the corner, and it's too far from the da-da-da, and the street's too steep. And then at that point, we say, wait a minute. Just because it's in Fred's ward, we better look at the city engineer's recommendations based on this ordinance and maybe we'll reconsider. Do I have that right?
I see it more as a tool that the neighborhood will use. Prior to making the request, they'll look through it, see what the guidelines are, and then come up with the locations that seem to fit and meet the guidelines. So I see it as a tool both ways. Residents can use it in their community processes of discussing where a speed hump might work on a street. So it gets them further along in the process of the kinds of things you need to think about when you're locating a speed hump.
So perhaps the city clerk will send, as you probably already do, send the, send this code to the person who's requesting the petition.
Well, honestly, I can't say I have sent it in the past. I generally, there wasn't much to it.
Right.
Before, but I could certainly incorporate that into the process.
I'd suggest that, so that people have that upfront knowledge.
There is a package that Jessie sends out that's the whole administrative regulation that is much more descriptive and much more helpful than the code has been in the past about the process. So she sends that out. Now that the code has language that's useful, we can include that with the regulations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
On page three A, the second A under the guidelines, talks about track of pavement markings that these devices should be painted with distinctive markings, which should include reflective tape or paint. Well, you know, that's a good idea, but I know the ones, several of the ones that I'm familiar with that have been in position for a few years, long ago, lost any markings that they may have had at the beginning, and there doesn't seem to be any attempt by the city to keep these speed bumps properly marked so that they're visible.
They're on an annual painting cycle, so they get painted yearly.
They...
And based on complaints. But yeah, my staff paints speed humps regularly.
I haven't seen the one on my street in front of my house painted in a long time.
Special treatment for you.
Maybe so.
I could certainly raise that with the supervisor, but they do, you know, when they're doing other painting in the area, stop bars and whatnot, they do paint speed bumps.
Okay, well, let this be an opportunity for all listeners of this TV show to go out and check their speed bumps and see if they're painted or properly marked, and if not, let your council member know. Can we refer him to Public Works, please? No, no, let the council member, or not keep.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. There, my recollection was when we talked at the, during the work session on this, that the item I on page four, we weren't going to include because it would preclude the installation of speed humps such as, or bumps, or whatever we call those things, such as we installed on Ritchie Avenue.
That didn't match my recollection, but if it's one you want to strike, we can strike it from the list.
H or I?
Aye.
Aye.
Because at that time, I had discussed how those, excuse me, seem very appropriate and seem to work very well, but they wouldn't meet this criteria.
They wouldn't be visible 100 feet from the driver?
I think if you're coming either direction...
I think they're just about 120 feet from each other, so they should be visible within 100 feet.
Well, the, they're 120 feet from each other, but there's a curve in the middle that when you're at one speed hump, you can't see the other one.
I could certainly shift it out. I didn't, I had it marked as one of the ones that you guys authorized, so if you want to remove, we can remove it.
And of course, you know, by striking that, that doesn't mean that we would install them willy-nilly anyways. We would still give consideration, but I would suggest that we strike that one.
Can I just ask if it's a, if it would be a good idea to keep it in there as a guideline? It says should, it didn't say must, and it doesn't say you have to take out one that doesn't meet that?
That's what I thought we'd agreed to in the discussion, that we weren't, we were making guidelines, but we could, because of situations like Ritchie Avenue, we could do something different.
Okay. I mean, tonight, some not always, but tonight.
Councilmember, oops, the light disappeared. Anybody else? Any public comment? Did we move this?
Vote. Never happened.
No, it's been moved in second. Robinson and Snipper. All those in favor of the, let's see, this was a public comment we didn't get. All those in favor of first reading ordinance, many in the code, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up is the consent agenda. It has four items. Would somebody like to move it?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries unanimously. Any...
Rock call.
Oops, rock call, yep.
Why? Just wanted to say.
Because of single reading ordinance. Two of them, first one.
Oh, right.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, and now we move to our last agenda item, which is discussion of award of contract for solar power installation through a purchase agreement.
Hi, this is, it's been a long time coming and a very, kind of an exciting development for the city. This is the first of three meetings that you'll be talking about this in addition to the past meetings that we've had to talk about the concept in general prior to us going out to bid. But the city went out to bid for requests for proposals from solar power providers to place panels on any city facility in exchange for an agreement, a long-term agreement with the city that we would purchase the power generated by those solar panels in exchange for them owning and maintaining the panels through the life of the panels themselves or a 20-year contract. So we, I talked with probably four or five firms prior to advertising the RFP, didn't know whether or not we'd get more than one proposal, but was pleased when we got two proposals back. One of the challenges for our sites in specific is a lot of vendors that offer the PPA want a much larger roof surface to work with. They're really looking for much higher generation for their financing package. Also, the challenge of our roofs is that you have multiple small roofs to cobble together to make a system large enough to be financially feasible. So a lot of vendors didn't want to do... So a lot of vendors didn't want to do individual little roofs here and there that added up together as one. So we really, we're kind of in a boutique model. We're in a kind of a small range. We're smaller companies that are experienced, are willing to take this on. So we got two good proposals from two vendors. One of the vendors is a company that put the existing panels up on the building here that went about during this auditorium renovation. They in fact, excuse me, they in fact are the company that we're recommending the city use to install the proposed system. In the interest of time, I don't know how much of this you want me to go through, we had the proposals evaluated by a number of technically qualified folks, and I really am appreciating the comments and the thought that they put into the evaluations. We have attached to the council package a lot of charts and forms and spreadsheets, some done by me, some done by the consultants, that took a look at the various different components of the proposal and how to compare the two. As you can see in the memo that I provided to Barb, the first attachment on these items, the two proposals we got differ in substantial ways. They differ in size, they differ in technology, they differ in pricing, and they had some issues related, you know, to installation and other factors that separated the one proposal from the other. Based on the evaluation that was done by the Wiggins Associates, who were the folks involved with the Public Works renovation and were the folks who first brought that concept of a PPA to the city, they evaluated the proposal. We also brought in Daniel Boyd from Ozone Renewables, who's actually out of Massachusetts. One of the reasons we chose to go with a technically qualified person outside the state is it's a very small world, they all know each other. And so we have a number of residents here in the city that are solar, you know, technically qualified experts, if you will, and they know all the players involved, and so there was a little bit of concern about, you know, not wanting to favor one proposal over the other. So it is kind of a small world of folks involved in this type of work. Let's see. In evaluating the proposals, there were several things that made the solar solutions proposal stand out over the other. The first being that we have experience working with them before. We had a very good experience with the initial 10.4 KW system that they put on this roof. It's been working very well. Their installation was clean and complete. They were here when they said they were going to be. There was a little bit of a dust-up when they first got started because our contractor didn't put any specifications in there. You know, it wasn't a ward that the city did directly, it was a ward that the renovator of this building had made arrangements for. So we had a lot of concerns about how our roof surface would be handled. We wanted mats up there, we wanted protection, I wanted guarantees that there was no damage to the roof surface. And caused a little bit of a, you know, conflict with the contractor, but the solar power installers just stepped right in, said, we got it, we understand it. They put mats down, made the whole, you know, problem go away. So we found them to be very responsive and reasonable to work with. So the first issue was just the knowledge of the city and the knowledge of the company itself. They had a little more experience than the company that offered the second proposal in terms of installation of larger systems. We're comfortable with the technology that they're recommending to use. It's the same solar panels as we have on the roof now. They're a little more efficient than the panels that the other company was proposing to use, though the system that they will install is smaller on a KW basis than the other company had proposed. We did have some concerns that the size of the installation proposed by the second company, Kenergy, was a little optimistic, you know, in kind words. That was what most folks responded when they looked at it. They were really maximizing every square inch of possible space to get that type of kilowatt generation. So there was a little concern that the actual installation was going to be less than what was originally proposed. The pricing on both, on both systems was very aggressive, and the company, Kenergy, proposed a pricing structure that stayed steady for the first five years, and then after that, had a rate of increase based on what the actual Pepco electric power costs were. So we have this flat level of costs for the first five years, and then on year six, they would evaluate whatever Pepco is charging for the rest of the energy use we have in the building, and they would knock 15% off of that for the cost that they would charge us. And that would include the generation costs, the transmission costs, and the distribution costs. So it basically would be a 15% reduction on the whole package of costs that we have for electricity. Solar Solutions has a different approach. They offered a pricing for the first year and then a 3% increase straight across the board for the remaining, you know, 19 years of the contract, for the full 20 years. So we know at the outset what we were going to be paying year to year. When you did the financial analysis of the two proposals, what was found is that depending on the rate of increase of Pepco or any other supplier's electricity rates, we could end up in a very different position in terms of cost for the solar power. Obviously, cost is not the only issue that we're trying to get at by doing this installation, but it is a significant one. And so some of the charts that you see attached to the package items you have tonight, particularly the ones that I did, as well as the ones that a couple of the other contractors did, at about the 4% annual rate of increase of power, the price structure looks to be favorable for the Kenergy proposal. Once you get to a 5% increase or more, if the rate of increase for Pepco electricity or whatever electricity we're purchasing is greater than 5% annually over the course of 20 years, the price structure starts there to be favorable for solar solutions, and if it's more than 5%, the favorability increases hugely. So there could be a substantial cost difference, again, depending on what the rate of increase is for the electricity rates. With the Kenergy proposal, I think I have on my cover page here, we'll be covering about 20% of the electric use needs for this building and the Public Works facility. And again, it's a calculated estimate. We're about to undertake this year several energy reduction measures that will significantly impact our electricity use, one of which is going to be the change out of the chiller system, and that, I don't think you voted on tonight, but in the coming meeting, you'll be voting on a design engineering contract for that. Tonight, or previously, you approved the change out of the library rooftop unit, which is a 20-plus-year-old piece of equipment. So we're going to be making some substantial improvements in equipment to this building that will reduce energy use. And at Public Works, it's a whole brave new world up there. I mean, we know what it was to run that building, which was uninsulated cinder block, you know, poorly structured building. Now we're going to have, you know, a very energy-efficient building up there with a geothermal system and daylighting and, you know, various different types of heating and cooling. So we don't know what to expect with the amount of energy use we have in that building, but reasonable to assume it'll be less than what we have been, you know, using in the past. So the actual percentage of electricity that we could be generating from our solar panels could go up as high as 25% or maybe even more, depending on what our total electricity use is. So let's see if there's any more main points I wanted to raise. I think I've pretty much covered it all. One of the things that was put out as an additional agenda item, I failed to include the cover page of the Wiggins Associates review of the proposals. You got his chart, but you didn't get his cover page, which helps to demystify some of those numbers. And I think the rest of the package sort of speaks for itself in terms of their evaluation of the proposals. So what we're looking for tonight is just, you know, answering any general questions. This is just kind of a work session discussion on this issue, and then we've scheduled a first and second reading on the following two Mondays until we finally reach the point where we can then begin contract negotiations with the firm to get this going. And we're hopeful that once we get the council approval, we can get this moving fairly rapidly. Of course, the community center roofs are available and ready to go as soon as they get materials and permitting. With Public Works, we're still waiting for, you know, the roofs to be finally finished before they can do the install up there, but that's coming pretty quick. After this month or maybe early August, those roof surfaces should be in place.
Thanks. Councilmember Wright.
My quick question has to do with the energy credits, so the RECs. Do they, are they allowed to sell the RECs, or do we have, like, alternative pricing if they don't sell the RECs? Are these deals, are they selling the RECs? What's going on?
These deals, the RECs are an essential part of their financing structure. I spoke with the companies in a pre-bid meeting, as well as others, as to whether or not they could give us an alternative proposal, knowing your interest in this, that would allow us to hold the RECs or the RECs not to be sold. And there was no interest or ability to get that package off the ground. It's kind of a critical part of their initial financial structuring to offset the cost for them to sell the RECs.
So they weren't interested in saying, if we don't sell the RECs, you could pay us X, or we can buy the RECs?
The cost would be prohibitive.
Okay.
Yeah, the cost would be significantly prohibitive to do that. And it would, we'd have to upfront that cost. I mean, part of the interest in this type of proposal is we have zero outlay of cost and in fact see savings immediately from the electric use generated by these panels. If we were to hold on to the RECs or not allow them to sell them, we'd have to upfront a substantial amount of money to offset that cost. There's also a view in the industry that the life of RECs is pretty limited, like three to five years from now, there won't be a market for RECs anymore. And actually, in Maryland, the market for RECs is not as enticing as it is in some other states like New Jersey, which are much more aggressive in the sale of RECs. So it's kind of, you know, it's a small window, and they want to take advantage of that.
Yeah. I mean, I think what's going to happen with RECs is quite unclear. You know, there's a lot of speculation, all the, there could be, seems less likely that a federal market would develop now. I just bring this up because I think we should be fully aware of what it means. I do think even if we don't sell the RECs, it's better than not doing solar panels. But basically, what you are saying is you're saying you're taking the environmentally, environmental benefit, the carbon kind of neutrality of the solar panel, and you're selling it to someone else. And that means that they can use that to offset their producing of energy that actually does create many of the greenhouse gas issues that we care about.
Right, the state has a requirement for renewable portfolio, so most of the purchases of RECs are utility companies. So it basically enables them to get credit for any solar RECs that are out there on the market as their own, so that it can match their, you know, basically the percentage that they need to achieve of a renewable energy program. And, you know, especially in a situation like we have with Pepco, they don't do any generation.
Right.
So everything they get is on the market. So it's, you know, everything they, everything they count towards themselves, they're purchasing.
Right. So it's not like you're taking energy production off the market. You are new energy, you're sort of creating in a, at least in an environmental way. So just, as I said before, I think it's better than not doing the solar panels, but it's not like the same as just putting solar panels on your roof and not selling the RECs and totally getting the benefit of both the electricity as well as the environmental impact. I'm real excited about, either way, I'm very excited about the project. I appreciate all your diligence in it. I know you've probably learned a ton in the process, and I think that's beneficial to us. And I think, you know, there's a group of residents, they met actually tonight, who are taking investments and trying to get some of these programs efforts off the ground in other parts of the city. I think they made a conscious effort not to bid on this because they thought that it would happen anyway, and they should spend their time other places. But I do think I would encourage those residents, as other opportunities come up, we should, you know, consider whether, and as they get up to speed and have deals on the table, they might want to bid on these projects also. So I'm real excited about it. It sounds like we should move forward even if we're not going to retain the RECs.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, I really also appreciate all the work you've put into this, because I think it's a really good layout of what the pros and cons are of each of the systems, which I appreciate. I have a question. We use 100% wind energy credits now, and was that taken into account in the pricing and cost estimates, savings estimates?
No, we'll have to decide, and the council will have to decide, and I guess staff will have to make a recommendation as to what we do. Currently, we're offsetting 100% of our electricity use by purchasing wind credits, kind of in a similar marketplace as those that we're about to sell, for, you know, to offset our current electricity use. Once we are generating our own green power, we may recommend that we reduce the amount of energy that we're purchasing wind credits to cover. Say, for instance, if it's 80% of our power is Pepco power versus solar power, then maybe we start looking at wind credits for the 80% that we're not generating ourselves. The amount of money we're spending annually on wind energy credits is in $3,000 to $4,000 a year, so it's not a huge pot of money. So, you know, reduction of 20% of that is kind of miniscule, whether or not we want to continue on the basis of just continuing to encourage the marketplace. We purchase those wind credits through the buying cooperative that we're involved with in Montgomery County. And just our interest in going to 100% has moved them further along in terms of the percentage of green power that the county itself, as well as the other participating jurisdictions, purchase.
The second piece to what I wanted to say is, as someone who does a lot of cost estimates in my job, these estimates have a lot more uncertainty than is indicated in discussion. So that for me, I would place greater weight on the other things that you have identified. The fact that the system is a bit more efficient, that the previous installation went smooth, that the management of the team is simpler because it's one company, that we'll get the system donated at the end for, instead of having to, whatever, you know, buy it at market value. These are all, to me, worth quite a bit. That said, the solar solution is actually a little better in terms of the pricing. So on the basis of all of that, I'm really supportive of your decision to go with that one.
I appreciate you mentioning the donation of the panels after 20 years. They're assumed to have another five years of life in it. Now, what we do 20 years from now, who knows? We may decide to continue and re-up, you know, and get the latest, greatest new technology. Maybe we'll be doing wind turbines by then. I mean, it's hard to predict, but it's, you know, it's a substantial thing to have five years of basically free use of the solar panel array that we'll have on the rooftop. So that's a significant item.
We have kept, as you know, only too well, a lot of our structures way past the projected date.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It does seem to be more our pattern than the alternative.
Councilmember Clay.
I also want to thank you for all the work that you've done on this, and I also want to thank you for getting additional opinions from the Tacoma Park residents and other experts. It's been really helpful, and I've learned a lot reading through the information. I also thought, as Councilmember Snipper did, it's interesting to look at the comparison where we had one company that had essentially guaranteed return, but that's not the company that comes out on top in the final in the analysis. Because when I first read it, I was like, oh, guaranteed return, that seems a little bit better. But I think for all those other reasons that would support moving forward with the solar solutions proposal, so thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I would concur with Councilmembers Snipper and Clay. I guess, you know, I'm not an expert in anything having to do with solar energy or all the technology with any kind of energy, but it just occurs to me that the technology with solar, for example, is changing so fast, that there's so many small R&amp;D companies out there who are working on it around the world. out there who are working on it around the world, not just in this country, that the idea of measuring this whole thing in a 20-year timeframe, you know, might, it just seems a little ridiculous to me, because in five to seven years, there may be breakthroughs in cellular, so, solar technology that, that will, you know, obviate a lot of the advantages or disadvantages that we can conceive right now. But that's, you know, that, we can only deal with what we know. The other question that I had is a bit more generic, and that is, we're competing contracts like this. In this case, we just got two bids. Do, do we, as a procedure, standard operating procedure, go back to the, to the bidders and ask for a best and final offer in the case where we're trying to evaluate two, and we just want to see if, if this is literally what the, what the, what the competitors can, you know, do, or can they do better?
Yes, we do.
You do do that?
We do go back. Sometimes it's just relative to questions about the bid, or if there's, you know, missing information that we deem not to be significant enough to cause the bid to be disqualified. We went back to both firms in, in this proposal, in this process for clarification. Kenergy's original proposal was for 25 years, and the bid clearly stated 20 years. I wasn't interested in getting into a 25-year contract. So the first call to them was to say, "Our, our bid is for 20 years. Can you make 20 years or not?" And they said, "No." And then they called me back, and they said, "Well, yes, we can," and let me send you what the 20-year proposal would be. So we do have the ability to communicate back with them, answer questions, get clarification, make sure that we're, we're understanding each other completely relative to the, to the proposal at hand. We also have a RFP that specifies what we're, what we're evaluating the proposals based on. So there were, you know, they, those measures change based on what we're buying. But in these cases, experience and knowledge of the system and similar, you know, similar type of projects was, has had a higher scoring potential than, you know, cost was in there as well. But we were really looking for a full service package that we were comfortable with.
Did you originally anticipate, thinking that you might get more than two?
At first, I thought, you know, my first couple of phone calls to solar vendors was kind of like, they politely told me, you know, "No, you're way too small. Thank you anyway." So I was thinking, "I'm not going to get any bids." And then I got a few sort of fights. And there was a vendor, Clean Currents, that I thought, sure, was going to bid through Washington Gas Energy Services. They had come and sat down with me on two different occasions and explained their process. But in the end, they either were too busy with other projects, or decided this was a little too complicated, a little too chopped up for their liking, and they chose not to, not to give a bid. In this case, because it has been developed over such a long time, and I've called all these folks so many times as we were trying to develop our process, each of the companies that didn't bid, you know, emailed me back, told me why. So we had a pretty good, you know, process going in terms of having a sense that what we were putting out on the street was reasonable. It just was very tailored to specific types of, of companies.
So this was a real learning experience.
Oh, yeah.
For, for, for you. And I, again, I would just concur, is that clearly a tremendous amount of time went into this effort, and I certainly appreciate it. And I think a layperson like myself, it's, it's, can understand it, and I appreciate it. It's written in plain English relatively, and I appreciate that as well. So, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the Montgomery County Public School System, which is really at the forefront of taking this on. And they shared information with me right from the beginning, including their RFP that they use for the school system. So we had a good start on some language that we would have otherwise had to hire out to get, to get the bid written.
Thanks.
And I'll just add that I concur that your, in the end, your analysis gets us to the right place. The only downside of this one is that it looks like the, the basic materials are made in China.
Yeah, I don't know where they're manufactured.
Yeah, that's what it says in here. And an upside is that because it's the same materials and the same vendor, they're going to be able to tie into the monitoring that goes on in this room over here, so that it'll kind of tie in with these, and people will be able to see what's going on, on the, on the web.
Yep.
Good. So, do you have what you need from us? Are we ready to go forward?
I believe so. We'll be coming back next week with the first reading, first of the two reading ordinance for your authorization.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? We're done.